...that were posted. With respect to public employment, I reminded the council that my contract expires June 30th, and I advise the council that I am not seeking reappointment as a city attorney. I'm going to retire as of that date, and I'm going to be going into private practice. And I thank the council for all the years that they allowed me to represent the city. And I had a lot of fun doing it, and I wish you nothing but the best. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. That concludes sessions adjourned, and we will open the study session. Please call the roll.
Sorry, I just heard some -- not completely unexpected, but not known news. Yes, Councilmember Asher. I'm sorry.
What's your name?
Here. Councilmember Asher.
Do you know us?
Councilmember Asher.
I am here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins.
Here. So, tonight, we're going to hear about our climate action plan and our update. Take it away, Nancy.
Thank you. Hi. Good evening, everybody. Almost said good morning. Feel that fresh.
Wow.
So, I'm here to give you an update on where we stand with our climate action plan and the goals within it. And the climate action plan was developed in 2008, and the goal was set at 25 percent reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2020, based on 2004, 2005 baseline. It addresses programs and measures for the city to take in its own operations and also for -- to be done community-wide. And it measures greenhouse gas emissions resulting from energy use, transportation, water use, and solid waste. We don't have a lot of data on water, so I won't have a lot more to say about that. And it is a small contributor because it's mostly about the energy used to move the water. So, Emeryville, with its beautiful green lawn, which may not be green for that much longer, is -- has a reputation in the area as a leader, and really beyond the area, as a leader in green programs and green infrastructure. And our leadership here within the city and regionally has resulted in substantial improvements in our greenhouse gas emissions. In addition, the fact that we have this reputation attracts businesses and residents who share that -- those values. And so, the situation improves upon itself naturally. All right. Since 2008, and before, of course, but since the climate action plan was put in, we've done a lot of things. We're currently -- for energy, we're doing upgrades. We've done energy upgrades at city-owned facilities, including solar panels at two facilities with two more -- three more planned, and upgrades to streetlights, traffic signals. The police station, when it was redone, got LEED certification, and we have worked -- am I not near enough?
Closer.
If you ever accuse me of not being loud enough.
Just be closer to them.
Thank you. Okay. And we've provided outreach to residents and businesses on energy use and energy efficiency. We've also, along with everyone else, reduced permit costs for solar installations. So, we've done that for energy. For recycling, composting, and waste, we have multi-stream recycling citywide. So, we have compostables, recyclables, and trash. And we do a lot of outreach and education with residents. And we have an eco-foodware ordinance that we were early adopters on that has reduced a lot of the polystyrene, the plastic, and really persistent plastic that create a lot of emissions when they're made and create a lot of trash and pollution when they're disposed of. In transportation, we've done an awful lot. We support the Emery Go-Round, which reached almost 1.7 million passengers last year. We do a lot of planning for transit-oriented development. Charlie here knows how much is done. We do --
I'm a row.
We do regional transit coordination. E-bots was a big effort. A lot of transit coordination and planning and advocacy. We have the Safe Routes to School and Safe Routes to Transit projects that are done or mostly done. We have some hybrid vehicles for staff use. And we were named the most walkable city in the East Bay last year. So, in transportation, still talking about transportation, you'll see it's a big -- there's a lot to talk about. We've done a lot of pedestrian and bicycle improvements. We have an award-winning pedestrian bicycle plan. We have a lot of infrastructure: racks, parking, lockers, Greenway, boulevards, signal sensing. And we have a requirement in our planning process for bike parking since 2008. You need long-term and short-term bike parking. And we don't have ongoing counts for bikes on a daily basis, but we do count them every year on Bike-to-Work Day. And you can see here, this chart shows the green is total bikes that we've counted, which has gone up almost 1,700 percent.
That's a pretty steep line there.
It's a really steep line. We do count at more spots than we used to. So, the red line shows counts of comparable spots. So, it's still a pretty steep line, even if you're only counting at the same spots. So, that's part of the -- we're both participating in and helping to cause the regional growth in bike commuting and bike use. Okay. In addition, we've got green building standards and green business program, and we've got 23 LEED-certified buildings in Emeryville and 25 Emeryville businesses certified as Bay Area green businesses. So, you know, we do have a community here that's working on this. And for instance, IKEA's putting their -- you probably all know all about this, but it's their first in the world fuel cell power source at their Emeryville store. So, again, we're the type of community in which you do that. For urban greening, we were leaders in the adoption of a vegetated stormwater management ordinance and water-efficient landscape ordinance using bay-friendly landscaping practices. We've got nearly 4,000 street trees out there, street and park trees, and that's an 18.5 percent increase.
That's nice to see.
Yeah, in the last 10 years. We're also starting already to do climate change adaptation. And we're -- we've cut back, as of last summer, we cut back our water use and our irrigation, and we're cutting it back even further now this spring with the governor's new mandate. Water use and conservation are not captured in the measures that lead to the goal, but they're still good for the planet, good for the community, and improve quality of life for everyone. So, they're worth mentioning. So, to measure progress, we -- everything's measured in CO2e or CO2 equivalent. Carbon dioxide is only one of six gases that are understood to comprise the greenhouse gases. It is by far the most prevalent one. It is also one of the ones with the least capacity to heat the atmosphere. But -- so, all the other ones are normalized to a CO2 equivalent measure. So, we have them all rolled in in our CO2e. If we were -- if, say, there were emissions of sulfur hexafluoride, that would be 23,900 tons per ton, you know, of CO2 emissions. I didn't say that right. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but can you explain why everything goes to carbon dioxide equivalent? Why not methane or some other?
Because we have to do less math because most of it is CO2.
Okay.
So, you don't have to -- you don't have to make much adjustment. If you had to adjust all the CO2, you'd be doing more math.
I see.
Yeah. That's really it. You could just pick any one, but that's the one. So, and here's some hard truth. This is where we have gotten in our CO2e emissions. The green lines are goal, considering, you know, a steady progress toward our goal. The blue line is our emissions, and the gray dotted line is the forecast for where we'll end up at 2020. And you'll see there's a big gap. It does not look like we're going to get to that goal. And backing up, we'll talk about how to think about that and maybe, you know, ideas. So, going back, we were one of the first -- we were in the first 15 percent, say, of climate action plans adopted in California. Most of them were adopted after ours. And we have learned some things about it. Everyone, there are some things that are standard and many things that are not about how you assume what your goals will be, what measures you'll use, and what way you look at them. And I think there've been some lessons learned since we got on the bus early that we can think about going forward. At least, even if we don't meet our goal, we can at least track our progress in a way that's meaningful. All right. How are our neighbors progressing toward the goals? Berkeley, we all have different baselines, baseline years, but Berkeley has gotten 8 percent of the way toward -- well, they have a 25 percent goal as well. They have 8 percent reduction. San Francisco's doing really well. They've got a 14.5 percent reduction. We've only got a 1.33 percent reduction. But, look at the next slide. Look at the population growth. This is not accounted for in our measures. We've had a 35, almost 36 percent population growth in the last 10 years compared to a lot less than half of that rate in the other two cities. If you then do a per capita reduction rate, our per capita reduction in greenhouse gases is 18 percent, and that's better than either of the other municipalities are doing. So, the fact that we're small and that we're growing is making this measure harder and harder to reach. The data that we use are -- they're national standards and about what data are used and how they're collected and expressed, and it's just as much kind of mumbo jumbo behind the scenes as any other data. You know, you make assumptions and you use those, and as long as you use them consistently, you get measures that show real change. But you've made a bunch of assumptions. Measures include, as I said, emissions from energy use, transportation, and solid waste. There are lots of things that play into these measures that are out of our control. PG&E's energy mix, it's much -- they've got a goal of 30 percent renewables by 2020, and they've been -- they came up from 12 percent renewables to now they're at 19 percent renewables. And that means that our energy is cleaner, and we, you know, the same activity produces less greenhouse gas emissions. Same amount of electricity used has less emissions because the energy is cleaner. We have methane collection at the local landfill now at Altamont that made a huge difference in the admissions from our solid waste because it's captured and used to fuel the trucks, the fuel efficiency of vehicles. As that changes, it goes up and down. That affects -- and freeway traffic loads and through trips are a big part of our transportation numbers, and they're not very sensitive to what we do here. Some categories of data are more specific and more reliable. The energy data is really good. PG&E gives us very specific data, especially for residences. They give us a little more aggregated data, but it's Emeryville-specific for commercial. Solid waste is decent. The tonnage amounts are specific to us, to our -- the amount of waste that's going off, but they make assumptions about the mix of the waste that is doesn't -- is not Emeryville-specific. So, that's not -- it doesn't reflect our waste perfectly. Transportation is the one, the measure that is the least sensitive. It's a share of the region's transportation. So, there are vehicle miles traveled regionally, and we get a share of that assigned to us so that even if we all stopped using vehicles, our -- the data would move 2 percent overall, and we'd get a 2 percent share of that, and it would show like 0.4 percent, you know. It wouldn't make a real dent in the data. So, the data for transportation are particularly problematic in terms of what we do and how it affects the numbers. So, just back to the issue of per capita, this is the total numbers of what we've -- what our greenhouse gas emissions over time. 2004, we had a total of 178,000 tons. We're now at 176,000 tons. That's that 1.33 percent improvement that I talked about. It's not very impressive. If you, again, if you do it by per capita, the emissions have gone down 27.19 percent so far in the last 10 years on a per capita basis. If we were to try to -- if we were to meet our goal of 25 percent reduction in total emissions with projected population change, that would represent a 61 percent decrease in admissions per capita. It's a much more aggressive goal than I think was really contemplated at the time. We have just five years to make that goal. So, here again, this is this slide that made everyone sad. Now, if you look at this, instead of a total, if you look at this in per capita, you can see the trend is much better. We're still not quite on target, so there's more to do. Another thing that I don't think I've got a slide on, but I want to talk about is the per capita number -- maybe I do have a slide on it. But the per capita number that I'm using is just residents. And our resident, our population goes up 300 percent during the day. Most other cities, San Francisco goes up 20 percent during the day. We go up 300 percent during the day. So, even using a per capita number that's residents-only is still a blunt instrument. Doesn't really get us there. So, lessons learned include, do we want to use more specific metrics? We may want to adjust some measures to take the things that are out of our control out of the measures. We may want to use more specific denominators to measure commercial energy against daytime population, residential energy against nighttime population, transportation against daytime operation -- that's population, wrong. Traffic on Interstate 80. Okay, so, in the county of Alameda, the MTC has estimated that 58 percent of the traffic of the miles traveled is on freeways. I think it's probably higher here, but let's say it's 58 percent. That's a big chunk that we can never touch. We can't really touch that. If we were to, you know, reduce all of our vehicle trips here in town, we'd still have 58 percent of the transportation showing there. And we're never going to reduce all. We're not going to be a walking town completely. This is the trends by sector. The top line there is transportation, and you can see that the solid line is where we've come, and the dotted line shows where we would need to go to get to the goal. For transportation, that's a super steep line. Commercial energy is a steep line, much less so. And then, down at the bottom, residential energy and solid waste, they have a small portion of the emissions, and we're much closer to the goal for those. If you were to subtract the 58 percent of freeway traffic, this is what it would look like. In either case, you can see that those top two are where we should be focusing because they're the largest and they're the furthest off their goals, and so we have the most opportunity up there. Same kind of data here, just presented a little differently. Transportation, overall emissions have gone up in the past 10 years. Commercial energy has gone down. Residential energy's gone up a little, and solid waste has gone down. That's in the face of a lot of growth. This is the same numbers with the freeway taken out. Thinking about transportation, one thing we can look at is how do Emeryville residents behave, and how do people who commute in behave in terms of transportation? And Emeryville residents are really good at not driving alone to work. This is commute mode. They don't drive alone to work as much as the average in the Bay Area, and they use transit a lot more. So, I think that's -- gives credit to not only our location, but our transit-oriented planning, where we make the -- the Emery Go-Round makes it easy for people and our proximity to other transit routes. People choose transit when they live here. Not so for the people who come in from out of town.
We have the highest walking as well.
We have the highest walking, yeah. That's -- and we're most walkable city. Yeah. No, our residents are doing really well. So, what we want to try addressing is the people who come in, which is twice the number of the residents, and they're driving in a lot. So, we have some ideas. We can think of ideas about how to address that, but that's another place we can possibly make some good progress. The emissions from energy have gone down in recent years. That's in the face, again, of growth. This is particularly meaningful because it's very specific to Emeryville. The data are specific to Emeryville. PG&E's green energy mix, energy codes that are coming in, and just the availability of better appliances and better lights and lamps, and that's contributing to that. But we're -- if we were looking at this from a per capita standpoint, we're almost a 36 percent improvement there, reduction. We're at 12.78 just on raw numbers. That's pretty good, given all the growth. Commercial users use 87 percent of our energy. Residential use is only 13 percent. And Maurice was reminding me that Novartis is not even online. So, they come back on with their big research facility, or it's -- I think it's still Novartis, the big one.
Griffles.
That'll --
Griffles.
Griffles.
Yeah.
But isn't -- well, Griffles? All right, Griffles. That'll jump even more. That percentage will go up. Overall, total energy use in the city has gone down by 0.7 percent.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. So, efficiency, and people see the dollars and cents of that, and we've got programs that do outreach and help people take advantage of PG&E's programs. Residential use has gone up by 20 percent since 2005, but the average use per household has gone down. So, it's another place you see the growth reflected. Each household is using less, but the town is using more because we have more people. Commercial has also gone down by 1.7 percent since 2005. This is, according to PG&E, these are the top 80 percent of electricity users in Emeryville, our offices, biotech, high-tech, hospitality, and other. So, when we think about commercial energy programs and outreach or incentives or requirements, these are the sectors we should look at for the most bang for our buck. So, how should we proceed? Emeryville won't come close to meeting our goal at the current rate. We are planning more actions, and we'll continue to work on what we have been working on and add programs. I've been ramping up already on energy involvement because I think that is a place we can make some improvements. But even the measures that don't show, even if we didn't reach 25 percent, we are making progress. And the measures that don't count, all those transportation measures that don't really show in the data, they still have benefits. Their quality of life, air quality, safety of the streets, all of those things are real, and they are meaningful. So, some things we can do, we can look at in terms of measuring our progress. We can look at data measures. We can keep the goal, if we want, as an aspirational goal, as it is. We can also break down, and as I said, look at different denominators, look at the data in ways that bring out more information for us. We can do, these are programs that we're planning or have been proposed already, energy improvements to City Hall for HVAC repairs and a full lighting retrofit. The lighting retrofit will save us 15 tons of CO2 annually. This possibility of participating in a strategic energy planning process. We have the City Hall-based Bike Share program rolling out next month. I don't know if you've seen that, but Bike Share for city employees going to meetings around town. I know we're looking at installing electric car chargers here and expanding our alternative fuel vehicle fleet. We're planning LED streetlight updates, upgrades, and energy upgrades at the senior center and Fire Station 34 as the renovations go on at those two places. We also, for community-wide, we're participating on working a lot of time, spending a lot of time on trying to get this, our part of the regional Bike Share program, off the ground. That's scheduled to roll out in 2016 and have full implementation in 2017. I think that's a very aggressive goal, too, so we'll see how that works out, but still in the process politically, but it looks like it'll happen, and it looks like we're in. I'm already planning outreach to multifamilies, buildings for energy, and looking for opportunities for the commercial energy sector. Two areas stand out, as I've said, for the highest opportunity for progress. Drive-along commutes into Emeryville and commercial energy use. We've got a lot of ideas, and I'm open to more, about drive-along commuting, transportation planning, which we're already doing, limit parking, charge for parking, do traffic calming, transit-oriented development, which we already do, support for expansion of transit, which people are working on here, new initiatives like Bike Share, and Vision Zero is a concept. Vision Zero is the concept that life and health cannot be traded for any benefit, any monetary benefit, and so all transportation planning should be done with that goal in mind, zero traffic fatalities, and even if it makes it slower. So, that's kind of the pie-in-the-sky goal. That's not necessarily a practical goal on today, but something to think about. For commercial energy, we might consider a building energy savings ordinance, which would require energy audits at certain periods of time, or a commercial energy conservation ordinance, which would require a time of sale. We might consider energy rebates and incentives. And as I was talking with Maurice earlier, we think the commercial community has been doing a lot to improve their energy use. So, we don't want to get punitive necessarily. We want to help them. They already value it, judging by the numbers. We could require existing buildings to get some sort of LEED or Build It Green or other kind of certification. We could require them to label their energy use, like a refrigerator when you buy it, put it on the outside of the building. How much energy does this building use? And participation in the community choice aggregation process could help us affect the energy mix, how green it is.
And Councilmember Martinez is serving on the county.
Yes. I've talked to her at the shoreline the other day, so I'm glad about that. So, let me show you what we're working on. I'll try and do this quickly. We in Environmental Programs, that's me and Marcy Greenhut, we work on programs that meet regulatory requirements. That's a driver of 63.5 percent of what we do, roughly.
A half.
The things that we work on impact the greenhouse gas measures as they're currently measured, 40 percent. But 97 percent of what we do affects greenhouse gas emissions, whether they're measured or not. And I'll just show you the categories. This is kind of what we brainstorm, how we spend our time. That's staff time percent. Waste takes a lot of our time, and it's mandated. Bike-walk transit, you know, you can see down the line. Those are the things that are mandated. Waste, stormwater, landscape and water use, and hazardous materials in the sign ordinance, which is a tiny part. These are the parts that show in the existing measures. You can see why maybe we're doing a lot that's not showing. And these are the ones that actually do impact emissions or carbon uptake. So, again, it's sort of a reality check on the numbers. They don't tell the whole story. So, what do we do now? Going forward, we have to determine how to define and meet our goals. We have to prioritize our efforts. We have to innovate and adjust. We have to leverage the city opportunity and effort. And what I'm recommending is that we develop a work plan to accomplish. And what I'm recommending is that we develop a work plan to accomplish this in the new Sustainability Committee. And that's all I've got.
Could we ask questions?
Sure.
Absolutely. Scott?
I did a little view of Emeryville from Google Earth recently, and I was looking for the amount of solar in our city, just by looking at rooftops. And of course, I saw right over City Hall here, I saw our solar, and the biggest solar looks like it's over IKEA. And there's just not that much elsewhere in our city. And we have some real intensive users in Novartis and Griffles coming up, and their roofs are just crowded with equipment, whereas we have warehouses surrounding them that have empty roofs, potentially that could feed their energy use with solar. If we had some ordinance that allowed solar generators of power to transmit property through property line without going through PG&E, this might really help out our commercial energy use, because I think companies that have intensive use, that don't have the roof, could literally pay for their power with helping to pay for panels on adjacent warehouse roofs.
Yeah, I think the solar opportunity is a juicy one, and that we probably can find incentives and rebates. I don't know about the technicality of PG&E allowing what they will and won't allow, but they have been moving on that. It used to be they wouldn't let you generate more than a certain percentage of your use. Now that's, you can generate more, so that is definitely something that would be worth looking into. I agree.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent report.
Thank you.
And it really says to me, you know, back in 2008 when we worked to put this together, it was a very difficult task, and quite frankly, we were kind of going blind. We didn't really know what we were doing. It appears to me that staff has worked in a direction where we've really used our resources of time and energy and money of focusing on those areas that we can change. However, there's a big elephant in the room, and that elephant is I-80 and the enormous amounts of CO2 that is generated by the quarter of a million cars a day that are going by there. I would suggest that we direct, as a council, the new sustainability committee to really take a look at this and focus on what we can do, what will, which we have been doing. We're a very pragmatic city.
How to measure what we can do.
Exactly. And the statistics don't back us up. It's overweight by the big elephant sitting on the scale. We've got to somehow carve that out and say, this is this, we can do very little about this, but this is where we're putting our efforts, and design the target based on that. There's not too much you can do about I-80, but we have an infinite number of things that we can do here with our transportation coming into the city, as the mayor says, parking, the bicycle plans, things like that. We have an opportunity now. It's been seven years, it's time to take a fresh look at this, get a document. You're already doing the work, and very good work it is, but the numbers don't reflect it. So let's, does everybody agree with this, or not?
Yes.
Okay. Because you all, Maurice, your group has done a wonderful job here. I'd especially like to focus on the job that you have done with waste management and what we've done with that type of thing. So that would be my suggestion to the council going forward, that we direct the Sustainability Committee to come up with a document that clearly reflects what we are doing and what we hope to achieve within those parameters.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to say, I've only been here eight months, so we got to thank Karen for her work on the franchise agreement, and Marcy for her work day-to-day.
Absolutely.
And of course, Peter Schultz Allen for all he did for all those years, setting all this up.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just want to kind of underscore a couple of things that stood out for me. Vision Zero may sound like it's not pragmatic, but New York, San Francisco, and Portland have all been looking at it, and so it's something that I'm definitely interested in, and I was glad to see it up there. Also, the metric that you showed with people driving into work in Emeryville is of great concern to me, and I do hope that we focus on that in the work plan. One of the things that was on the list, and I don't know if I just wasn't listening carefully enough, or if you could tell me a little bit more, is in terms of energy audits of commercial properties, how does that work? How often are those properties audited? What kind of incentives are there around those audits?
That's, it's a very timely question. I know Berkeley has just approved their BESO. It's not a kiss, it's a Building Energy Standards Ordinance. They have a phase in, anybody, by the end of this year, anybody doing a sale or renovation over $50,000 would have to do it. And then it's phased in with more frequently for larger facilities, so I think the most frequent is every five years. And then it's like eight years and 10 years or something, depending on the size. And single-family homes are exempted, except when they're sold.
Okay.
And I don't know, I mean, I think the market has to determine what that's going to cost. I know there was some talk of it for a single-family home costing in the few hundred-dollar range. Of course, I think single-family homes have a whole nother challenge, where, you know, you could make someone pay $300 to tell, for someone to tell them that if they spent $1,000, they could save money, but they didn't even have the $300, you know. But for commercial, it makes sense, because usually it'll pencil out.
Right.
And they have more capital, generally. So that's something we could look at, and we could certainly, Berkeley just fought those wars, so we could learn a lot from them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you for preparing a very good report and co-sign onto Vision Zero as a good way to think about how we're going to form the work plan for our Sustainability Committee. And I also just wanted to also highlight, Jack mentioned it, but single occupancy vehicles coming into Emeryville, for those people who are just tuning in now or who walked in late, Emeryville residents are doing great at taking transit and walking to work and taking bikes to work. But our workers, our workforce, and as Nancy mentioned, our population goes up by 300% during the daytime, we are really failing at having our workers find alternate modes, rather than one person alone driving in their car to get here and park here in Emeryville. So I think that's a really good thing to attack, even if it doesn't move our numbers per our current climate action plan.
Right, thank you.
So I'll just add my thanks to your work in pulling this report together and your work that you do every day, and also your own assessment to focus on commercial in particular. And maybe if we go with CCA, that'll help with the mix and use more renewables anyway than what, PG&E isn't moving very fast in that direction. And one idea, the council's going to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to look at our density bonus system and some other things. And I will signal now a couple of ideas that I'm going to give at that meeting, which is that to get bonuses, people have to build buildings that are carbon-neutral. And that would be a way, if there's zero impact in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, that would be, they could get rewarded for doing that. And then the other idea is, it would be good for us to, and I don't know how you do that, quantify the number, the amount of CO2 that our street trees are sucking up.
Yeah, I think that's doable, actually. You know, we could do it in a more delicate way with, by species, or we could probably do it in a broader way, just by number, and deciduous versus evergreen kind of thing.
So I would be interested in seeing that particular statistic, and to say, well, our 4,000 trees are reducing greenhouse gas emissions by X amount. And then the other thing is, we may need to tweak our urban forestry ordinance so that whenever a street tree is removed, and a new tree is planted, that tree does not take as much carbon out of the atmosphere because they're younger and smaller. And so either to plant more trees than on one-to-one replacement value, or to do carbon offsets, bicarbon offsets for that, or something else. So those are some of the things I'm going to be suggesting at our joint meeting.
Okay, sounds interesting.
Okay. So if there's no other comments, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Study session's adjourned. And this takes us to the successor agency, to the redevelopment agency. Let us call the roll again.
Agency member Asher?
Here.
Agency member Donahue?
Here.
Agency member Martinez?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
And Chair Atkins?
Here. Are there any public comments on items not on the successor agency agenda?
Okay, I have, pardon me, I have in my hand here, City of Emeryville speaker card, even though it's not really card stock, it's just a piece of paper, but it's called the City of Emeryville official speaker card. This is given to people that want to speak on items if the council thinks that there's a large number of people that want to speak on a specific item, these are given out, and you're requested to fill these out as speakers. However, I'd like to remind the council that you are not required to fill one of these out to speak. The Brown Act provides that everyone can speak regardless of whether or not they fill out a card. And so that's the first point I'd like to make here, right now. And the second point is a point I've made now, this will be the fourth time I've made it before in this chamber, and that is, you'll notice on the speaker card here, it says, they ask for your name, the date, they ask for the speaker's phone number, and then after that, it says "optional" in parentheses, email, parentheses, optional. But when it comes to the person's name, that's not optional, that's required by the City of Emeryville. But I'm here now telling this body, a fourth time, that that is a violation of the Brown Act. In fact, we need to change the speaker card to comport with the law, because the law guarantees people's anonymity. You are allowed to make comments without revealing your identity. That's the law. So I don't think we should have a speaker card that says you are required to fill your name out. Last time I spoke about this, the mayor told me that speakers could just write anonymous, but this is coercion, and it's just not right. So all we have to do to comport with the law and to be operating in a legal manner is to just, where it says name, just after that, just write parentheses and parentheses, "optional." That's all we have to do. So I request somebody, one of the council members here, to tell the staff that that's what we should do. Just make sure our documents comport with the law. That's all. Just please fix this. It's a really easy fix. The fact that I'm pointing it out should make no difference, because what I'm saying is accurate, and so let's, please fix this. Thank you.
Mr. Carpio, did you want to speak?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I come forward to speak in opposition of the position of the city council about the $15 hourly rate as a minimum wage. If you do work on the mathematics the other way around, then you don't need to be an expert in calculation to find out that the $15 hourly rate will amount to a deflation of the value of the dollars. Instead of increasing the value of the labor at $15, I would advise all those who have huge salary to take a decrease in salary. For instance, the mayor earns $150,000 a year. Does she need all that? What does she do with it? I mean, I don't see her shopping for the best price in soap or anything like that. So obviously, she's overpaid. Many people are overpaid, and they look down with sympathy and say, oh, poor worker, you know, he does all the work for us, he needs more pay. They don't talk about their excessive pay. So this is something that is against the national interest. You are actually deflating the value of the dollar, and I repeat that. When I came to this country in 1962, I worked as a journeyman mechanic trade I learned from my father. And a journeyman mechanic at that time was earning $3 an hour. And of course, he was a union shop, so it went to $3.50, $4.00, and I did follow with curiosity how it meant. But then what I saw also is that at the same time, the value of the dollar, in which was equal to 1.220 Belgian franc, decreased. It became to be $1.20, $1.50, and now the dollar is less than European dollars. So this is a consequence of being irresponsible for the living wage of the worker, the working man, and the assault on the prevailing salary of the people who are already overpaid for what they do. I'm sure the mayor cannot justify her salary. She does in a health department in Contra Costa College. Thank you.
Any other, yeah, come on up.
I really want to support what Les Gentlemen said. In 1984, when I was publishing my magazine here in Emeryville, we did a survey of what the cost of living was here in the Bay Area. And back in 1984, we determined it was $14 an hour. It's now 30 years later, and we're still arguing about these kind of issues. I also want to strongly encourage the City of Emeryville to enact a rent regulation ordinance to control the out-of-control rents that we're seeing in our community. When I moved into this community the first time, you could buy a house for $10,000 to $20,000. And today, of course, these houses are selling for many, many, many times that. And I just would encourage you to do the right thing. My name, by the way, is Fred Dodsworth.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rod Henme, and I'm an Emeryville homeowner and architect who has completed more than 25 units of affordable housing. As an architect who has devoted his career to affordable housing, I passionately support your goal to provide more family-friendly housing. However, I'm here today to raise concerns because I'm worried that some of the ideas to increase the supply may be counterproductive. I recently attended a Planning Commission meeting during which proposals were made for new guidelines and regulations. These proposals include requiring a certain percentage of three-bedroom units on all projects, recommending or requiring various unit standards such as unit proportions, private outdoor space, et cetera. And I believe these regulations will work against the goal to increase family housing, and here's why. I surveyed nine apartment complexes in Emeryville, and I have a handout to show you that. The average three-bedroom apartment costs $3,700. Using a standard proportion of rent Using a standard proportion of rent to income of 1 to 3, a family needs to be making around $133,000 to afford this rent. Families making this level of income have many choices for their homes. So, for wealthier families, the critical issues are quality of the schools, safety, single-family housing stock. I work on affordable housing projects which are usually designed to serve in families making 50, 50 to 60 percent of the AMI. For Emeryville, this amount is $47,000 to $56,000. These would be solid working-class families. I'm sure we can all agree that a family of four making around $50,000 cannot afford a three-bedroom rent of $3,700 per month. The only way this working-class family can rent an apartment in Emeryville is to be able to qualify for one of the few affordable housing complexes. For working-class families, the number-one issue is affordability. So, what is the likely result of trying to legislate family apartments? One, increasing the cost of the units and thereby raising rents. For example, requiring a three-bedroom apartment minimum ratio will raise the cost per unit of the complex, decrease the number of units built, and raise the average rents. It will also not necessarily result in families moving in. In fact, anecdotal evidence suggests that students or young professionals, not families, are moving into three-bedroom apartments in Emeryville because of the cost. So, here are my suggestions. One, do not make any new compulsory design recommendations or standards. Two, increase the affordable housing contribution per unit of market-rate housing. Three, develop other sources of funding for affordable housing. And four, work on the issues that will attract wealthy families, schools, safety, better single-family housing stock. I recently spoke about these issues with Carol Galanti, a friend and long-term client who recently stepped down as the Assistant Secretary of HUD, the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. I described in very general terms your approach to regulate family-friendly housing, and she agreed with me that this will not likely be successful in creating family housing in Emeryville. If you'd like, I'd be happy to try and set up a meeting with her to talk about these issues.
That's your time.
Thanks for listening, and be happy to take questions, and I have the handout showing the, the survey of the units.
Any other public comment? All right, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, without exception, consent calendar, you can give that to the city clerk. Consent calendar's approved, and there are no action items, and the successor agency agenda's now adjourned, and we'll move right into the special, the city council meeting. And please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It gives me great pleasure to have two special orders of the day today. The first is the proclamation celebrating April as National Poetry Month in the City of Emeryville. And our poet laureate is here, but, yeah, hi Sarah. I don't know whether you're gonna be introduced or not, the way the agenda's written. Amber was gonna say something here. Hang on a second. Let me pull up the proclamation. Do you want to read it for me? So, Sarah, if you could come forward while I read this to you, that would be great. Whereas on, this is a proclamation celebrating April as National Poetry Month in the City of Emeryville. Whereas on April 6, 2010, by resolution, the city council approved the establishment of a poet laureate program for Emeryville. And whereas on October 15, 2013, by resolution number 13-132, the city council appointed Sarah Kowbrinsky as the City of Emeryville's 2013 to 2015 poet laureate. And whereas the goals of the City of Emeryville poet laureate program are to increase awareness and enhance appreciation of poetry and the literary arts. And whereas the program expands the work of the city and its arts community from supporting the visual arts as demonstrated by the annual celebration of the arts exhibition, the Art in Public Places program, and youth arts state, to encompass the literary arts to better serve the wide range of artists in Emeryville, including writers and literary and performance artists. And whereas the program benefits the community by building a long-term infrastructure for literary advancement of, in the community and our schools. And whereas National Poetry Month is a celebration of poetry first introduced in 1996 by the Academy of American Poets as a way to increase awareness and appreciation of poetry in the U.S. And whereas National Poetry Month has been celebrated every April in the U.S. since 1999, and the City of Emeryville wishes to acknowledge the importance of poetry and the literary arts by celebrating it here and now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ruth Atkins, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the celebration of National Poetry Month in Emeryville this April, and commence its celebration with a poetry reading that you'll give. So, thank you, proclaim today, this 21st day of April.
Thank you. First of all, I have to say how amazing it is that this community recognizes the importance of, of poetry. I brought a lot of poetry lovers with me. And some of you might have seen the Oakland Tribune today, and my family was a family that was priced out of Emeryville. Overnight, our landlord increased our rent 38 percent. And this, this story has really struck a chord with a lot of people, because it's, it's not just Emery, I mean, it's happening all over the Bay Area, to working families, to artists, and, and writers. So, it's wonderful that this community recognizes the importance of art, of literature. And I'm really excited about some of the programs I've been doing, like when, the readings in conjunction with the purchase award ceremony and the art show, and we're really excited about poems on the Emory Ground, we're six or seven months into it. And two days ago, I got an email from the poet laureate of Pacifica, and they've launched, they put out a call for submissions for the, their shuttle bus service. And I was contacted a few months ago by BART, they're putting together a best practices section for art on the, potential art on the BART, and, and that's a really bad rhyme, art on the BART. So, they made reference to poems on the Emory Ground. So, I'm really passionate about the programs that we've been doing here, very excited about it. And it's, it's really, it's really sad that that happened to, to our family. We landed well, I mean, we, we are now in Richmond. But for a lot of families, when a dramatic increase happens that quickly, it means homelessness. You know, a lot of people don't have financial resources or familial resources to, to carry them. So, so yeah, among, among the artist community, this is, everyone's sort of up in arms, but it's happening every single day. We hear something, like the Cartoon Museum in San Francisco after 30 years has to move, and there's a, a building in the Mission that houses 70 artists that is up for sale. And so, a lot of people who make the Bay Area this really fascinating place, you know, with this history of, of progressive thinking, and summer of love, and music, and art, you know, that the world knows it for, all these people who are responsible for these things are leaving. In fact, today, I had another friend send me a note saying that she's pregnant with her second, they're, they're leaving, because they just, it's just not a viable place for families, for many families. So, with that in mind, so when you, when you move, a move is, is a kind of loss, you know, a separation. So, a lot of people are losing their, are having to leave, are losing their homes. So, this is a poem about heartbreak, and it's called "What Happens When a Heart Breaks." Actually, it doesn't break at all. What happens is this. The body's cells call it off, their silent agreement, the unspoken code they keep to work in harmony, to preserve the body, to keep the spirit afloat. They simply call it quits. For a fraction of a fraction of a moment, they tear themselves apart, throw in their towels, light their stale cigarettes until the heart begrudgingly begs them back together, but never in the old order, like crossing the border into a new country where everything feels the same, only different.
This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to the New York Island, from the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. As I went walking, I saw a sign there, and on the side says, no passing. But on the other side, it didn't say nothing. That side was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to the New York Island, from the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. Nobody living can ever stop me. As I go walking that freedom highway, nobody living can ever make me turn back. This land was made for you and me. This land is your land, this land is my land, from California to the New York Island, from the redwood forest to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me.
Sarah, thank you very much for, for reading tonight, and thank you for bringing your supporters with you. I think maybe we should sing as an opening for our meetings every night, and to start, get us in a better, better mood. And I said this to you privately, and I just want to say publicly, how much I appreciate your willingness to continue serving your term even after you were forced out and displaced out of town. So, thank you for continuing doing the very creative work that you are doing, have done, that you initiated, and I'm so glad you're getting broader recognition for some of the innovative things that you've done here in Emeryville. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right.
We'll get to public comment after our special orders, you'll, you'll be able to see. We have more special orders to do.
So, the second one is a proclamation recognizing the week of May 8th to May 17th as the Affordable Housing Week. And I don't see that in my pack, electronic packet of proclamation. Let's see.
Yeah, the proclamation.
Thank you. No, that's the poetry, oh, here, it's on the back page, right. So, let me read the proclamation first, I don't know then if you have a little report to give. This is a proclamation recognizing May 8th to May 17th as the 19th Annual East Bay Affordable Housing Week, here to stay, building inclusive communities is the theme. Whereas affordable, quality affordable housing is the foundation for health, economic stability, and educational opportunity, ironic, given our last, what just happened here. Whereas affordable homes are a solution to homelessness and provide support to seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities. And whereas quality affordable homes are long-term assets in their communities, contributing to public safety and community involvement. And whereas development of affordable homes close to public transit and jobs will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and strengthen the economy by providing low-income families better access to opportunities and urban amenities. And whereas rising housing costs and economic factors have led to increasing displacement, overcrowding, and homelessness that threaten our region's diversity and economic prosperity. And whereas nonprofit organizations, local jurisdictions, community organizations, and many others, continue to respond to this need by providing homes and shelter for low-income people and those with special needs. And whereas East Bay Housing Organizations, or EBHO, is celebrating its 31st anniversary and the collective work of its 350 members to solve the affordable housing crisis and stabilize communities. And whereas EBHO has organized Affordable Housing Week for 19 years, and in its 31st anniversary year, will feature 20 events acknowledging the need for and contributions of affordable housing. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Ruth Atkins, Mayor of the City of Emeryville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th to May 17th as the 19th Annual Affordable Housing Week in Emeryville. And be it further proclaimed that the City of Emeryville will work collaboratively to secure sustainable funding and support for affordable housing at the local, regional, state, and, I need the other page, federal level, whatever it says.
Let me see if I can get to it.
Thank you. And will, and will encourage residents of Emeryville to participate in Affordable Housing Week activities proclaimed today, this 21st day of April 2015. Thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce Felix O'Young from EAH Housing, who is a EBHO member. EAH is the affordable housing developer that is going to be developing our next affordable housing project at 3706 San Pablo.
Good evening, hi, I'm Felix O'Young. I'm here representing, I'm here on behalf of Mary Murtough, representing both EAH and EBHO. But I'm also representing myself, and I have to digress from my script momentarily, it's hard to follow that. That was very moving, and, and very contemporary. I think we're at a time when this, the, the wealth disparity, the income inequalities, and this confluence of events are really taking shape, and it's gonna take local, state, and I think federal levels to try and address this. It's a much bigger issue than, than, you know, what we're able to do as one nonprofit, or what one city may be able to do. But I've always been impressed coming to this council, and I've been very appreciative that it's so open to different opinions, and that each one of you weigh those opinions, and deliberate on all of these issues. So, I've been very, very privileged to represent EAH for the last two years for our housing project. So, back on my script, this year's theme for Affordable Housing Week is "Here to Stay, Building Inclusive Communities." And the theme was chosen to underscore the power of affordable homes to allow people to put down roots and stay in their communities, and to build healthy future by preserving diversity and vibrancy for decades to come. I think you've all received the calendars, and for those in the public, if you just Google EBHO Affordable Housing Week, you can pull up the calendar. There are 21 events in eight cities in the East Bay that are scheduled for this, this week, starting with the kickoff celebration in Oakland on May 8th, where your proclamation's gonna be displayed for all the people who are attending. And I'm gonna keep my talk short here, because I know you have a lot of business to do. But I do want to echo Mary's remarks last week, that Sacramento has taken some bold initiatives in, in leadership in introducing legislation supporting affordable in leadership in introducing legislation supporting affordable housing funding. And in particular, AB 35 and AB 1335. And we're hopeful that councils around the Bay Area and throughout the state will pass resolutions in support of those resolutions in order to encourage the governor to sign these bills when they come out of legislature. So, on behalf of EAH and EPO, thank you very much for recognizing Affordable Housing Week, for the proclamation, for supporting our project. And hopefully you will be attending some of the events, including our Cathedral Garden Grand Opening in Oakland, which is another urban infill EAH community that's very similar to what we're intending to build on San Pablo Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks for coming tonight. Catherine, come on up here. There's something else I want to read here, which is an Employee of the Quarter. Your nominators worked with you every day and nominated you to get this Employee of the Quarter Award. And I'll just read a little bit here about this. On behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Emeryville, I'm proud to award Catherine Furpo the Employee of the Quarter Award for the first quarter of 2015. Michelle, I don't know if, am I scooping you? Did you want to say? Okay. Let me continue then. Catherine started her career with the City of Emeryville on January 18th, 2011, as a Community and Economic Development Coordinator. She's currently responsible for the housing program, which includes housing development, affordable housing, and CDBG compliance. According to her nominator, Catherine arrives early, leaves late, and works very hard to balance work and home life. She's dedicated to both underrepresented Emeryville residents and potential Emeryville residents with her work on affordable housing. She approaches her work in a calm, patient, and diligent manner. She's been able to comprehensively address the homeless strategy with excellent attention to detail. Catherine is an exemplary employee who's provided excellent service to the citizens of Emeryville for the past four years. As part of this employee recognition award, Catherine receives an award plaque and a gift certificate to an Emeryville restaurant of her choice. She'll also have her picture displayed at City Hall and lunch with the city manager and her department head. So, congratulations.
Have to get a picture of Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're right in line. It's public comment now.
No, on that item.
Go ahead.
Can I have a public comment on general items?
Come up.
Okay, I wanted to speak just briefly about affordable housing. That's the subject here. So, I've mentioned this before, but I'm going to take this chance since the Affordable Housing Week is coming, starting on May 8th, May 17th. The City of Emeryville is really waking up to this idea about we need affordable housing. And we're also really become aware in the recent years about the need for family-friendly housing. But I wanted to say again, that those two are linked, or they should be. And unfortunately, they're not in Emeryville. We have to ask ourselves, why do we want families here? Everybody says they want families, but why do we want families? And the way I look at it, it can be brought down to two reasons. One, because we like the demographic. There are not enough families here. And we like diversity. And to see families here is a nice thing because it increases diversity. So, we don't have enough families. Being family-friendly will bring more families and that's a good thing. An inherent good thing. But the second reason, number two, which is more important, I believe, and I think many people agree with me, is that we want families here to support our schools so we can make excellent schools here. But the problem is, we have, we're building this family-friendly housing now. It's, we're talking about making it required for development, but there's no affordability written into the idea of it. So, what we're going to attract are, I guess for lack of a better expression, we're going to be attracting wealthier families if we're successful. Because they're the ones that can afford it, as the architect gentleman said earlier. So, wealthy families are fine. That satisfies category number one, diversity, more families. But it doesn't satisfy category number two, because wealthy families generally don't put their children in public schools. They more, as a group, as a category, they're more likely to put their children in private schools. So, we're not satisfying the most important reason why we want to attract families to Emeryville and that's to support the schools. So, we need to think more creatively and be more proactive with merging the two inextricably and have them not be separate items like they are right now. So, that's what I'm proposing. That's what I think we should start thinking more in terms of, if it's not affordable, it's not actually a family, the way that we need it to be family-friendly. Thank you very much.
Other public comment?
Excuse me, Mayor, are you on regular public comment now?
Yes.
You have the clock ready? Okay. This poor thing takes me to rebuttal. I'm not a poet. I'm an engineer, a scientist, and I own patent in Europe and the US. And for the record, Nora Davis could testify that she has been behind all the raid that has been done on my property. You stole my machine shop. You stole my submarine. And you destroyed the scaffolding of my stainless steel thing. And what I do, my art, is also equal to any kind of poetry. Because poetry for me is 17th century upgraded, 17th century upgraded formal language. It doesn't matter which language it was happened. And to make a big fuss about it and a laureate about it and to be a laurate, I feel deeply insulted that my trade, my art, everything I do in the industrial scale has been raided by the City of Emeryville, has been filthy, nasty, dirty, and all that by a bunch of ignorant. And as far as I'm concerned, since you took my stuff, you are thief. You, you are a thief, you are a thief, and you are a thief, and you are a thief. You both thief. You do not deserve to have this honorable mayor and vice mayor position in this city. You're thief and you lie. And you raided my last scaffolding against an order of the court that was invalid and you knew about it. And you charged the lien on my property for the stealing of my stuff. Shame on you. Shame on you, bunch of thief.
Is there any other public comment on items on the consent calendar or other? And open.
Following up Mr. Carpio there, I'd just like to say that if you take things that don't belong to you, people get angry. So, he's angry because things were taken from him by the City of Emeryville that belonged to him. And so, he's angry. So, it's pretty understandable. I understand what he's talking about. But that's not what I want. I want to talk about, instead, about a looming big problem that is on Thursday. Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is going to be discussing the marketplace development. And there are two giant blocks of housing that they're going to be discussing. That would be the so-called Theater Site, which is a bunch of apartments. And then the so-called Shell Mound Apartments, which is another big block of apartments. The problem is, I've reviewed the two housing blocks and they do not comport with the latest iteration of the family-friendly guidelines that the city is in process of working on. They're not even close, with exception to the townhouses that are in those two apartment complexes. Both those apartment complexes have a small amount of so-called townhouses. Those do comply with the city's guidelines for family-friendly housing. But all the other apartments, and that's like 90% of them, do not comply. So, I'm alerting you that this is coming before the Planning Commission and they just don't comport. The family-friendly housing guidelines do not comport with this big project that's going forward. And so, and it's ironic, on the same evening, the Planning Commission is looking at the guidelines and looking at these two non-compliant projects. So, I want to alert you that this is moving forward and we, you know, we didn't have a building moratorium. Instead, we dispensed with that. But now here's the point where we're starting to become a problem already. And that is, the first project right out of the gate is not in compliance with what we want to do vis a vis bringing families to Emeryville. So, this has got to be dealt with. I presume if the Planning Commission forwards, shepherds it through, then it's going to be up to the five of you. And I hope that we can do what we intend to do here, and that is create a town that's family-friendly. And this project as it stands right now, not even close. And there's no way any reasonable person can surmise that. So, thank you very much.
Any other public comment on items not on the agenda or on the consent calendar? Is there a motion? Oh, is there a city manager's report?
Just briefly, I wanted to formally introduce two new staff members that we have here. One is our new Community Services Director, Pedro Jimenez. And the other is Tanya Harris, I think is here. Who is our ECDC manager. Pedro comes to us from the City of Hercules. He's in, I believe, his third week. So, he keeps coming back, so we're happy. And where he was the Parks and Recreation Director at the City of Hercules and we're very excited to have him. And Tanya comes to us from Oakland Unified, where she, among other things, also helped head up their TK program in Oakland. And I also wanted to know if either of you wanted to say anything to the council. Now's your chance.
I'd just like to say that I'm excited to be here and work for the City of Emeryville. In the past three weeks, I've met a lot of great people and excited about all the opportunities that are coming up here for the City of Emeryville with the ECCL project and the Senior Center of Renovation and a lot of other things. And you have a lot of great staff here. And I'm also happy that Cindy is deciding to stay on a little longer. In case anything comes up. So, looking forward to working with everyone.
Well, welcome Pedro and we're glad to have you. And welcome to your first council meeting here. We don't go as late as some cities.
Not always.
Hi, good evening. I too am very excited to be here. I've been here for about two and a half months. And I just have to say I'm thrilled to be part of a system who is so dedicated to early childhood education.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And again, it's nice to see you. I don't know how often we'll see you in council chambers at a meeting, but thank you for coming tonight. That's it?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. Not pulling anything? All right. That's without exception. The consent calendar is approved. And there are no public hearings. There are action items under the Transportation Committee.
I would move the recommendation of the Transportation Committee.
Do you want to say anything about them? Let's see.
They're pretty self-evident.
I can speak on it since Ken James is not here.
Okay.
There were, there's two items. One is in regards to three red zones that exist on Horton Street in front of the Sherwin-Williams project or property. So, the request was made to remove those three red zones so that we can increase the amount of parking in the area. So, that was the first request. The second request was in regards to creating a yellow loading zone in front of the, on Adeline, in front of 3900 Adeline project. They're going to need a loading zone to allow for people to move into that complex. And they were requesting for that loading zone to be effective on weekends only. So, it would affect three parking spaces. So, those were the two items that were recommended for approval by the Transportation Committee.
Move approval of the recommendation.
I second.
Anybody opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Then... Communications and reports. Department heads.
Just a quick announcement. We sent around a memo prepared by the Public Works Department regarding the drought, which we're going to post on the e-news and on Twitter. But essentially, we're trying to be proactive in trying to conserve water. We've gone through all our city facilities and changed the faucet aerators, which can actually add up to a lot of water when you consider that the standard ones use about two gallons per minute. We put in the water-saving ones. So, we're trying to move forward in a quick way to try to respond to the drought. We've cut back on our irrigation in the landscaping areas. And in some areas, we've turned off the landscaping irrigation. In other areas, we're trying to figure out how much we can get by with so that the plants don't die. So, as you know, there is a, East Bay Mud's going to be raising the rates and there's going to be restrictions there, as well as new regulations coming up by the State Water Board that we're going to be looking into as well. So...
Any other department heads?
Could I ask, Maurice, could you just give an announcement about what is going to take place at Doyle Hollis Park, about the fact that we're roping off that area? And how long it will be?
Well, we're not moving forward with reseeding the lawn there because we were going to, we were getting ready to rope it off and then rejuvenate the lawn. But then we figured it's going to take a lot of water and we're going to have to shed it off anyway. So, instead of spending $8,000 or $9,000 on that right now, we're going to wait till hopefully the drought passes and then try to resurrect the lawn there.
So, there will be no closure of Doyle Hollis?
There will not be a closure of the lawn.
And brown is the new green.
Brown is the new green.
All right.
Any other department heads?
I do have a few announcements of some upcoming events. The first one I want to mention is the annual Senior Center Flea Market, which is scheduled for Thursday, April 30th, from 9:00 to 4:30. Friday, May 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Saturday, May 2nd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that'll be at the Senior Center. So, I know it's a big event that really supports the friends of the Senior Center that help support a lot of the programs and services at the center. So, they're excited. They have a lot of items. I'm sure there's a lot of treasures for a lot of people there. Another event is the Emeryville Fix-It Clinic, which is scheduled for Saturday, May 9th, from 2:00 to 5:00. You can buy things at the flea market. If they're broken, they will help you fix it. If you have other items that you want to bring out, they can try to help you fix it or let you know how it actually works and was manufactured. They're also looking for what they call for coaches. So, if you're interested, check out the fixitclinic.org and you can also be a volunteer to help out on that day. We also have our May Dinner and Movies series. That's scheduled for May 1st, May 8th, and May 15th. For May 1st, Planes, Fire, and Rescue will be shown. For May 8th, Tangled. And for May 15th, Wreck-It Ralph. So, it's at a new location at Annie Yates Schoolyard. And then we also have May is Bike to School Month, which, May 14th is Bike to School Day. The kids are asked to participate for the whole month. And also, they'll be able to get raffle tickets that can win them prizes. On May 14th will be a big Bike to School Day event and they'll be able to win prizes at that event. There's also National Children to Parks and Bike Rodeo. That's Saturday, May 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Doyle Hollis Park. We also have Family Cycling Workshops. It's a free event on Sunday, May 3rd, from 1:00 to 3:30 at Annie Yates Elementary School. Each child receives a reflective vest for participating and they have other great events going on that day. So, those are the events coming up.
Thank you. Any other department heads? There's two support letters under my name. I want to speak to SB 655. This is about adding mold as an indoor health hazard. And it came to my attention through serving on the JPA Board for the Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, which is now subsumed under the Healthy Homes Department of the county. And the County Board of Supervisors has written a letter of support. I'm hoping the city will add to that. So, I'm looking for...
Without exception. Yes.
Okay, great. And then, Sabrina, I don't really remember medical marijuana coming through me but around this bill, but maybe it did. I don't really remember. But there's two bills right now... But there's two bills right now that are introduced, maybe more, that are introduced in the Assembly. And this is the Cooley Bill, and I do know that some Berkeley dispensaries are okay with this bill now, because it's been amended. But one of the things that this has that the Bonta Bill doesn't have are leaving the authority at the local level with local regulations. So I don't know if we want to go on record in supporting this. It's an emerging area. I'm sure this is not going to be the last attempt to regulate this, but the league worked on this. Police chiefs worked on this. So I think what's emerged out of this bill is kind of a consensus about an X way forward. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Atkins, I'd just like to comment that I think we're jumping in early on. I think there's going to be a lot of revisions in that bill, and there's going to be other bills that are coming forward. This is a hot topic for the legislature. So my own sense of it is, we are being premature to jump on board this bandwagon right now. Let's see how it shakes out a little, and what is going to serve the municipalities the best. That's just my feeling on this. We'll have another opportunity to jump on.
All right, are there -- I'm not wedded one way or another. Are there three people here who don't want to send a support letter to Sacramento?
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Davis. I think that there are going to be amendments to the major bills that are being focused on, which are 34 and 266. And I think we don't know exactly where they're going to end up, so I would rather wait.
I'm fine with waiting.
Okay. And I can go ahead and have Townsend add this to our watch list.
Yeah, we'll pull that then. So, let's see. Bear with me for a sec here. Are there any other council members want to report on anything? Meetings attended? Anybody?
Well, I can tell you about mosquitoes. I'm sorry to report that --
Start itching.
West Nile is coming earlier this year, in a real way, to Alameda County. And there's been a major spraying event for the larval stage down around Coyote Hills. And this was urgency spraying that had to be done, because we have West Nile being transmitted through birds. So I'm sorry to tell the public this, but it's the case. And unfortunately, also that California seems to be warming up a little bit, and from Florida is coming this tiger moth mosquito that carries different diseases, including one called Chickengunya, which is not -- it's a very painful disease that is really a part of the Caribbean right now, and it's moved into Florida, and now it's in Southern California. And the problem with this mosquito is it's really hard to stop in the larval stage, because it breeds in little tiny places where water will stay for just a short period of time, and the larvae survive in a desiccated state. So it isn't like we can stop them so easily in the larval stage. So I don't have an answer for you about this, other than keep screens on your windows, be prepared to use mosquito repellent this coming spring and summer.
Before we -- I hate to end on a downer, but Maurice was talking about the water-saving measures and that the city is taking, and thank you. And I just want to say that the council members all got a letter from the East Bay Mud President about measures that are in effect, and I just want to let the public know, since we're broadcasting this. So some of the regulations and restrictions include prohibiting using potable water for decorative ponds, fountains, or other water features if that water is not recirculated, and washing cars, boats, trailers, aircraft, or other vehicles with potable water by hose without a shut-off nozzle is prohibited. Can't wash down sidewalks or driveways or hard surfaces with potable water. And, let's see. Runoff is prohibited when you do irrigate. Irrigating is only permitted twice a week, not on consecutive days, and before 9:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m., except for potted plants. And, let's see. We can't irrigate turf and ornamental landscaping with potable water during and within 48 hours following measurable precipitation. And flushing sewers or hydrants with potable water are prohibited, except in cases of emergency and for essential operations. Looks like that affects our fire service. And use of potable water for construction, soil compaction, and dust control is prohibited if a feasible alternative source of water is available. So I'm not sure about our gray line capabilities, but maybe that would be a way to fill up some of those trucks with gray water and then bring them onto construction sites instead. So anyway, I just want to let people know, we're running out of water in this state, and everybody needs to do their part. If there's no other comment, this meeting is adjourned.